Okay, good evening. I am Andrew Bing and I will be the facilitator for tonight's public hearing that the Maryland Department of the Environment, or MDE, will be conducting for the 401 Water Quality Certification, or WQC, for the Maglev project. On behalf of MDE, I welcome you. The purpose of this hearing is to provide members of the public the opportunity to present views, opinions, and information that will be considered by the MDE in evaluating the 401 WQC for the project. After we hear a brief presentation from MDE and from the applicant BWRR, I will open the hearing up for public testimony. I will review the ground rules for the hearing after these presentations. I do want to remind everyone that as the hearing facilitator, I am responsible for running the hearing. I will now introduce the representative of MDE who is in attendance for this evening's hearing, Danielle Spendiff, Chief of the Regulatory and Customer Service Division of the Maryland Department of the Environment. At this time, I will turn the proceedings over to Danielle to provide her statement.
Good evening. I would like to welcome everyone to the Maryland Department of the Environment's Public Informational Hearing for Water Quality Certification Request Number 23-WQC-0007 submitted by Baltimore-Washington Rapid Rail, or BWRR. My name is Danielle Spendiff, Chief of the Regulatory and Customer Service Division at the Maryland Department of the Environment, which I will refer to as MDE or the Department. I am the panelist representing the department at this evening's public informational hearing. I would like to thank everyone for taking the time to participate in the public process and the Courtyard Marriott for providing the hearing location. At this time, I would like to acknowledge any elected officials or their representatives who may be here this evening. If you are an elected official or representing an elected official, please raise your hand now to be recognized. Thank you. It is the responsibility of the department to evaluate requests for water quality certifications, or WQC's, under Section 401 of the Clean Water Act, which requires Maryland as the certifying authority to determine whether the discharge associated with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, known as the COR, permit application NAB-2016-01622 complies with the state's water quality standards. The department's authority is found in Subtitle IX of the Environment article. Each certification request received through our regulatory program has specific and unique issues and impacts that must be considered with regard to Maryland's water quality standards. The department is neither a proponent nor an opponent of any project. The department is conducting this evening's public informational hearing pursuant to Code of Maryland Regulations, or COMAR 26.08.02.10-F2. The purpose of this public informational hearing is for the applicant to present an analysis of impacts that may be associated with the proposed activity. From the hearing participants, the department is seeking your perspectives, views, and concerns about the project, specifically as they relate to the water quality certification request. Although we will not be responding to questions this evening, your public input is essential to making well-informed and thoughtful decisions. I would like to emphasize that the purpose of this public informational hearing is to consider only the WQC requests pending before the department. There may be concerns related to issues that are beyond the scope of this certification request and hearing. We would like for the hearing to remain focused on the WQC decision and related concerns. It is not necessary to read a statement to make it part of the official record. Written comments will also be accepted and receive the same consideration as any oral statement. In fact, for accuracy, if you have a letter to read into the record, I suggest you also provide us with a copy of the letter when you finish. This public informational hearing is for Water Quality Certification Request Number 23-WQC-0007 submitted by BWRR and received by the department on February 7, 2023, for a dedicated alignment and structures for a high-speed, superconducting magnetic levitation, or SC Maglev, transportation system between Washington, D.C. and Baltimore, Maryland, with an intermediate stop at BWI Airport. The SC Maglev alignment consists of both below-ground and elevated rail on viaduct. The hearing record will remain open for two weeks after the last hearing until 11:59 p.m. on Thursday, November 2, 2023. The comments received during the public comment period will become part of the project file and will be considered by the department when rendering a decision on this certification request. The department is obligated to issue, with or without conditions, deny or waive certification of this project prior to expiration of the reasonable period of time as determined by the COR, which is February 7, 2024. The department's decision and accompanying information will be sent to the interested persons list, the applicant, and the COR, and will be published in the Maryland Register. Any person who is aggrieved by the department's decision may appeal by filing a request within 30 days of publication of the WQC decision in accordance with COMAR 26.08.02.10-F4. Please contact me directly to be added to the interested persons list. I will now turn the proceedings over to the applicant to provide a brief presentation on their proposed project.
My name is Ian Rainey, Senior-- excuse me. Sorry about that. Good evening. My name is Ian Rainey. I'm a Senior Vice President with Baltimore-Washington Rapid Rail, the developer of the Baltimore-Washington, D.C. Maglev project, and also the applicant for this water quality certification. I'll provide a quick overview of our project as part of this evening's hearing. To begin with, our company's long-term vision is to connect the major cities and airports from Washington, D.C. to New York City, as you can see in this slide, using superconducting magnetic levitation technology, or SC Maglev for short. The first phase of that long-term vision is the segment between Baltimore and Washington, D.C. At 311 miles per hour, SC Maglev will enable a one-hour trip from Washington, D.C. to New York City and a 15-minute trip between Washington, D.C. and Baltimore, Maryland. And just to avoid any confusion, I'd like to point out that the water quality certification application submitted by BWRR is solely for the Baltimore-Washington, D.C. segment, not for points north of Baltimore. This map shows the alignment, the station locations, and the train set maintenance facility location that BWRR submitted to the Maryland Department of the Environment for the WQC. As you may notice, most of the alignment is underground, about three-quarters, and BWRR designed the alignment this way to minimize surface impacts, especially to residential I'd also like to emphasize that BWRR is fully committed to following both federal and state stormwater management guidelines. We will comply with all MDE regulations for regulated stormwater quality and quantity treatment. Moreover, we will implement environmental site design, ESD, to the maximum extent practicable. We'll also implement erosion and sediment control measures in accordance with MDE practices and timeframes. Regarding non-tidal wetlands and waterways, this slide shows both permanent and temporary proposed impacts in the top table. I'd point out all of this information is in the WQC. I hope some of you have an opportunity to review it, but this just summarizes some of the salient points. Of the proposed impacts, of those proposed impacts in the top table, the impacts to non-tidal wetlands of special concern are shown in the bottom table. Regarding Tier 2 impacts, the project will traverse the Patuxet River 1 and Beaver Dam Creek 2 Tier 2 watersheds. BWRR plans to maintain the condition of waters in these watersheds by avoiding or minimizing impacts. Where impacts cannot be avoided, we will provide appropriate mitigations. In fact, from the earliest design stages, we've sought to avoid impacts altogether. For example, we've minimized, to the maximum extent we could, the size of the train set maintenance facility, and as I mentioned earlier, we designed the project so that the majority of the alignment would be in deep tunnel to avoid impacts. We believe there is sufficient opportunity for mitigation in the Patuxet River 1 watershed through reforestation techniques, and in the Beaver Dam Creek 2 watershed, there are limited opportunities for mitigation. However, there is assimilative capacity. As noted in the WQC application, BWRR has located more mitigation than is required in the Patuxet River 1 watershed, and we've provided a social and economic justification for the unmitorable impacts to the Beaver Dam Creek 2 watershed. I'd like to conclude by highlighting some of the benefits of the project noted in the WQC. These include reduced air emissions, which result in improved air quality, significant job creation, and of course, transportation improvements without displacement of residential communities. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, thank you, Ian and Danielle. There are multiple ways to comment on the WQC. You can provide oral testimony at this public hearing, or send an email or written letter to the MDE Wetlands and Waterways Program. Details on ways to comment can be found on the video screen. All comments received, whether at the hearing through oral testimony or through other methods, will be given equal consideration, and comments must be received before 11:59 p.m. on Thursday, November 2, 2023. Today's public hearing is being audio recorded. The official transcript of the public hearing testimony will become part of the project record and will be available for public review on the MDE's project website. Agency representatives and I will be listening to all testimony and will not be answering questions or responding to any comments made during the hearing. Again, the purpose of this public hearing is to allow interested parties to provide public comments on the WQC. My role as the hearing facilitator is to run a professional and orderly public hearing. I understand how important the issues are related to the WQC, and I take my role as hearing facilitator seriously. I am committed to providing members of the public an opportunity to provide comments in an organized, fair, professional, and orderly manner. We look forward to hearing your perspectives on the proposed project, but please be courteous of all speakers and understand that offensive or profane language will not be allowed. The panelists, Danielle and I, are interested in hearing comments about the WQC from all interested individuals. Again, neither I nor Danielle will respond to any questions or comments. We are here to listen. Please remember that we are recording this hearing. Speak directly and clearly into the microphone and provide your full name, address, and any organization you may be representing. To ensure all will be heard, there will be a three-minute time limit for public testimony and a five-minute time limit for elected officials and group representatives. The time will start after you introduce yourself. I will remind you when you have approximately 30 seconds remaining, so you can begin to wrap up your testimony. As the hearing facilitator, if you are unable to conclude your comments at the end of your time period, I will end your testimony and move on to the next person. At this time, I will call on the first person to provide comments. We normally begin with elected officials, but there are no elected officials here, so I'm just going to go in the order that I received. Again, we have a microphone right there, so we would just ask you to come to that microphone, and you'll hear me repeat it, but I'll say it. But I'm going to have you say your name, spell your name, say the group you're representing if you are representing a group, and your address, so you'll hear me repeat that quite often. But I am just going to go in the order that I received the cards here. So the first person I heard from was Dan Wimmer, Maryland Coalition for Responsible Transit. So Dan, you'll see a clock will appear on the screen here shortly. There it is. Five minutes. Yep. And again, if you could say your name, spell it, the organization, and your address. Thank you.
Very good. I'm Dan Wimmer from Lexington Heights, Maryland, 6242 Woodland Road. That's in Admiral County. I represent the Maryland Coalition for Responsible Transit, MCRT. The MCRT was organized for the purpose of engaging public participation in development of current and future transit proposals by ensuring they are evaluated for economic viability, social and environmental impact, and community accessibility. The Maryland Department of Environment has a critical decision to make on whether the Baltimore-Washington Rapid Rail, BWRR, Water Quality Certification, WQC, application and related reports provide sufficient, well-documented research, sufficiently justifies the purpose and need, and provides the level of evidence needed to substantiate the economic value to warrant degrading our state waterways and build and operate the SC Maglev. Our findings from researching the SC Maglev and its impacts to the communities along the potential alignment since 2017, MDA should deny BWI's water qualities application for many reasons. I'll touch just on a few. First, our concerns regarding the federal railroad administrations at FRA elements of the SC Maglev's draft environmental impact statement, DEIS, have not been addressed. The MCRT submitted a 365-plus pages of comments and questions regarding the DES in May 2021, along with many others, including local governments, environmental community organizations, and individuals who oppose the project. FRA's SC Maglev DEIS review process has paused since August 25, 2021. That's over two years. To date, MCRT nor others opposed to building the SC Maglev have received responses to our detailed questions. The FRA has not released a supplemental DES for public review and comment. So our question is, how can MDE make such a critical decision on the contents of the WQC application while the FRA has not addressed a long list of problematic issues already raised? Second, MCRT finds BWR's claims of economic benefits to be highly inflated. In the WQC documents, BWR states the financial success and operation and maintaining of the SC Maglev is based on ridership. MCRT has been trying for three years, and BWR still has not provided a fully unredacted data and ridership analyses to validate that the SC Maglev project is financially feasible and able to generate sufficient revenues to self-sustainable to cover the cost of system's operation, maintenance, and loan servicing. However, the Maryland Public Policy Institute, Cato, Dr. Owen Carey, and our own research clearly, with full documentation of information and data sources, indicate that BWR ridership projections are grossly inflated, possibly as high as 10 times the more likely level of ridership. It is unlikely SC Maglev will have the level of ridership needed to generate the revenue needed to cover its operational costs, which will result in the need for taxpayer subsidies. That's monies needed for far higher priority transportation projects. We have heard, and we will continue here, it's jobs, jobs, jobs. In 2017, BWR stated the SC Maglev would create 74,000 job years. In the 2021 DES, BWR stayed at 161,000 and also stayed at 195,000 job years. Now, BWR says 205,000 job years. Remarkably, the projected cost estimates have barely changed from $15 million to $16 billion. BWR's math just doesn't add up. BWR is misleading the public also by talking about job years, which are not the same as actual jobs. Where are the analyses to substantiate these job numbers? And why such a huge increase in the numbers? MDE and the public should see the analysis that substantiate these job creation numbers before any decision to build and operate the SC Maglev is made. MCRT finds the better alternative for high-speed, reliable, ground-based trans service between Baltimore and Washington, D.C. is to continue the enhancement upgrade of Amtrak and Mark. The environmental and waterway impacts to enhance these existing and operating systems is much lower than building and operating the SC Maglev. The access they provide to all people along the corridor is far greater at a far lower ticket price. Third, BWR's WQC application and related reports do not demonstrate the level of specificity and accuracy required by the MDE to grant certification.
30 seconds.
There are several flaws in the application, the lack of specificity regarding stormwater treatments, the use of aquatic life data, that's nearly 20 years old, and reporting on different Tier 2 waters. For these reasons, many more, MDE, we believe, should deny BWR's WQC request. Thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you. And I will point out to anyone else, it looked like Mr. Wimmer had written his comments. You can submit those to us as well, just to make sure. So, okay, great. We're going to go to the next person, Kathy Bartolomeo. Again, if you could just state your name and spell your name, if you are representing a group, and your address, please.
I'm Kathy Bartolomeo, B-A-R-T-O-L-O-M-E-O, 15 Laurel Hill Road, UNR, Greenville.
Great, thank you.
It makes no sense to pursue this project. Much time and thousands of dollars have been spent by BWR to pursue this project, just take 15 minutes off travel time from Baltimore to D.C. Even to go to New York City would be years of turmoil in decision-making. We must consider the costs of mistakes and overruns, and our lack of faith in BWR mitigating corrections after the fact. The mistakes that companies such as Enbridge has done, as they build pipelines, it is difficult to have faith in them. It is difficult to have trust when there have been a number of corrections that have been made by BWR over the last one and a half years. Professor Dr. Basila Alves from University of Maryland has created good environmental models that reveal that we do not have enough stormwater managing modeling to know the impact as we pave over roads, remove trees, add pipes for various needs. In regards to the DEIS and the BWR documents, we are out of date with our present reality. The building of the Bureau of Engraving and Printing, BEP, must now be considered into the plans. It will be using at least 104 acres on bark and adding to the streams and wetlands with impervious pavings and coverings. More impact, the Maglev guideways will take 72 feet of rideaway. The building process will take up 125 feet. And the replacing of trees after building will not be of help to the plants and animals, birds, insects, salamanders, and moors, in the moor, in the areas after constructions, as these creatures will be gone. We must consider the costs, mistakes, and overruns, and our lack of faith in BWR mitigating corrections after the fact. Who will benefit? Those who make millions off the development and the contracts, not our children. And as Chief Seattle, I'll say again, only when the last tree has died, and the last river has been poisoned, and the last fish has been caught, will we realize that we cannot eat money. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I just want to point out, I have six cards here of people who indicated they wanted to provide public comments. I obviously see more than six people. No one has to provide comments, but if you do change your mind and you do want to make public comments, you just need to go out to the table outside, let Caitlin know, and then she'll hand me a card, and that's how we'll do it. So I just wanted to let everyone know. The next person on my list, I have Ervin Jones and then Lamar Mutz. Mr. Jones and Mr. Mutz wrote down Carpenters Union. Are you all representing the Carpenters Union? You are. Okay, so you'll have five minutes.
Right.
If you could just state your name, spell your name, restate who you're representing, and an address, please.
Okay, my name is Ervin Jones. My name is spelled E-R-V-I-N, and Jones the last name. All right. All right. And I'm here in support for the Maglev. I think this will be great for the environment. Right now, we're talking about the green builds and all this green energy. Well, this will help out with the green building and the green energy. It'll get more people off the road, they'll get back and forth from D.C. to Baltimore and in the future up to New York. It's also, it'll also make it safer for travels to go back and forth from New York to D.C. I know right now the holidays are happening, so this will make it easier way for people to travel from New York to D.C. and have a safe travel and be safe and be with their families and get back home safely. It also saves time. I mean, time is important to everybody. If I could be somewhere within 45 minutes to an hour, whereas though it might take me three hours to four hours to get there, I'd rather take the 45 minutes to an hour. It's going to bring income to the people in the communities doing construction and even after the construction. It's going to bring a lot of jobs for the people that are working at these stations. Of course, you're going to have the maintenance, you're going to have the people driving these rails. So I think that would be great for the people of the community. Also, it'll bring more people to this area, because this right here would be a game changer. This would be a safer way for people to travel, I mean, to get from New York to D.C. within three hours or less. I mean, that's amazing. I mean, that would be a game changer for this, and it'll bring more people to this area, because it'd be more convenient for them to travel, and it'd also bring more tax money and tax dollars to the states that's going to be involved inside this project. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you for your comments, Mr. Jones. I will next go to Lamar Mutz, also representing the Carpenters Union. Again, sir, if you could just state your name and spell your name and the organization you're representing and an address.
Good afternoon, I mean, I'm sorry. Good evening, everyone. My name is Lamar Mutz. That's L-A-L-A-M-A-R, M-U-T-T-S, and I'm with the Eastern Atlantic State Regional Council of Carpenters, Local 197. I'm speaking in support of the Baltimore-Washington Rapid Rail. Through research and the Baltimore-Washington Rapid Rail Water Quality Application Plans, I feel is that they are taking the steps and precautions to ensure that they will meet federal and state EPA requirements to protect the environment. As an industry, we all have been moving forward towards green energy efficiency. However, the Maglev transportation infrastructure is a common angle of eliminating fossil fuels, especially with trains. And this new and cutting-edge technology is the type of transportation that is essential to going green. The Carpenters Union is dedicated to training and contributing the highest trained qualified professionals to keep the environment clean. We have several facilities where green building and awareness curriculum is being implemented currently, right now, for solar projects and offshore wind projects. We currently have a training center right there in Hamilton, New Jersey, where we do all of these types of training and teaching to our members, men and women. The High-Speed Maglev Project is the type of transportation project that not only represents jobs for Maryland union workers of several trades, but permanent jobs and represents forward thinking, a cleaner environment, and transformational opportunities for millions along the Northeast Corridor. Just like my colleague said, Ervin Jones, my wife, she lives in, well, my wife, her family lives in New York. We constantly go to New York throughout the, you know, throughout the year, and like my colleague said, that'd be a game changer as far as going back and forth, up and down to New York. I mean, to get to New York within an hour, I believe, that would save a lot of time. Like they say, time is money, money is time. Right? So I just want to say that I support the Maglev, and thank you.
Okay, thank you. We're going to go to our next person, who is Joseph Gaskins, representing the Prince George's Contractors Association. Mr. Gaskins, I think you know what I'm going to ask you to do.
Yes, I do. But also, I want to add this, and I'll do it in a couple seconds. I want to add Senator C. Anthony Muse in the 26th Legislative District, whose office is in Annapolis. He is 100% supportive of this particular project, and he will submit his report. Now, moving on--
So just state your name and spell it again.
Joseph J.O.S.E.P.H. Gaskins, G-A-S-K-I-N-S.
And who you're representing.
I'm representing the Prince George County Contractors and Business Association.
Great, go ahead.
Okay, again, I'm Joseph Gaskins, and I'm testifying on behalf of the Prince George County Contractors Business Association, and it's an advocacy group representing over 3,000 certified MBE businesses a quarter-- And it's an advocacy group representing over 3,000 certified MBE businesses and contractors located in the state of Maryland. Tonight, I am testifying in support of the MagLift project. This project will connect Washington, Baltimore, Delaware, Philadelphia, New Jersey, and New York, at all the major airports in less than an hour, which is unbelievable. This project will follow both environmental protection and Merlin Storm Water Management Guidelines for federal projects, including any other environmental requirements. The project offers over 700 permanent jobs, and has committed to a diversity, equity, and inclusion plan that will positively impact the region. With a commitment to at least 40% of the construction workforce going to a diverse population, and 25% of the construction dollars with MBE companies, this is a good project for the region. I bring to the table over 10 years of working with DeLuca III Designing the Metro back in the 70s, and a proud project for the region, for those who are in the Washington metropolitan area. The impact of that project being built in this area created millions of opportunities for individuals, not only from the construction aspect, but after the project was developed, you had major economic structures that became evidence of the actual advanced approach that the Metro used in terms of identifying corridors that would benefit from this transportation connections. This project does basically the same thing. They connect the major airports, which is really, truly visionary. Do you have, and as a result of the construction and development project and, and the Washington metropolitan area, you've connected the region that goes from Bethesda to Dulles Airport, to Boston Station, to the Green Line on Branchy Avenue, to New Carlton, and now you have the Purple Line construction. It's unbelievable in terms of the magnitude of construction dollars that was generated, but also the development that was created. This project is even more environmentally sound than Metro was at the time. But for me, I testify on behalf of my children, my grandchildren. I think it's short-sighted for anyone to stop what we know is a good, sound, green project from moving forward. It gives my kids, my grandkids, the opportunity to have employment in New York, get there in less than an hour. It's unbelievable. And the rate of pay versus being in La Plata, working in La Plata, and having, and also being able to get to New York on a train and be back home before it gets dark, is unbelievable. So there's no way that when the entire world is, is on a line that will take us to a green economy, which will save us all, which will save this environment, there's no way that I cannot responsibly not support this project as an engineer. It is up to us as individuals to look at this project for really what it is, and not be selfish in our thoughts on what we think is a project that's detrimental, because it's not. And with that, I close. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The next person is Lisa Ellis, representing the Maryland Business Clergy Partnership. Yep, you can lower that. And again, if you could just state your name and spell your name, and who you're representing.
I'm Lisa Ellis, L-I-S-A-E-L-L-I-S. I'm representing the Maryland Business Clergy Partnership, an organization that represents 300 churches and over 600 businesses. Good evening. I'm speaking on behalf, again, of the Maryland Business Clergy Partnership in support of the Baltimore/Washington Rapid Rail's water quality certification application, and for the project as a whole. I've had a chance to review the information presented tonight, and am express, and am, and am impressed at the strategy's BWRR plans to use to maximize the environmental benefits of the project, and reduce any potential impacts on the ecosystem. While I am not an expert on water quality, I was, I was able to get my questions answered, and the documents I've seen here tonight by company and MDE representatives. I feel confident that BWRR plans will keep construction and operations of the MagLift aligned with federal and state standards. The fact that once operational, the MagLift is projected to take millions of cars off the road, helping improve air quality for the region, is further proof that MDE should approve BWRR's application for water, water quality certification. We have experienced the hottest summer on record, according to the United Nations. The University of Maryland for Environmental Science reported that the Chesapeake Bay's health shows signs of improvement. But there's still a lot of work to do to return the bay to a state of good health. Increasing public transportation option is an important part of improving our region's environment. I urge MDE to approve BWRR's water quality certification application. I also wanted to state that personally, you know, I had a fatality in my family that literally resulted in a death because of too many cars being on the road. We need a project like this that helps keep us safe, to reduce the number of cars, to provide employment that otherwise in this region does not exist. I encourage you to approve it. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. The next person is Patrick Wilby. Mr. Wilby, as you come up, you can come around the front if it's easier. Okay. If you could just state your name and spell your name, and I'm not sure if you're representing a group, or if you're just here representing yourself. So if you could, and why don't you, if you could just raise the microphone, there you go.
Thank you. My name's Patrick Wilby, P-A-T-R-I-C-K-W-I-L-B-Y. I am a representative of the Eastern Atlantic State Council Region of this area, Local 197. I'd like to say that everything that they're doing is, is a good thing for the environment. It was said earlier about the trees, about the birds and the bees and all that. Of course, right now, during the construction, there is going to be slight difficulties and inconveniences with them. But after everything is in place, and everything regrows, so will nature come back. The water quality, they have a filtration system in the ground that will clean this water for future places. It is a good benefit for the whole community, even the part that is on the ground. It benefits everybody for working, working in the job. It will create a lot of work for everybody. I'm just talking about from here to Baltimore. Whatever happens up there, happens. But down here, we got it. We have the people to do it, we have the jobs, we have the money coming back into the county and into the state. So once again, it is a benefit, and that's all I'd like to say. I totally approve of the plan.
Okay, thank you. I believe someone went out, and I'm going to get a card. So I'm not going to go into recess yet, but I don't have anyone else who had signed up to provide testimony. But I just want to wait a couple of seconds to see if the gentleman who walked outside with my colleague is in fact signing up to testify. So we'll just wait and see, and if I don't hear anything, okay, thank you for checking. And again, if anyone else here who has not had the opportunity to testify would like to, just come see Caitlin, and she'll get you signed up. Okay, Mr. Reynolds, if you want to come on up to the mic. And again, as you get to the mic, if you could just state your name and spell your name, and your address, please.
Good evening, I'm David Reynolds, D-A-V-I-D-R-E-Y-N-O-L-D-S, address 6715, Terra Alta Drive, T-E-R-R-A-A-L-T-A Drive, Lanham, Maryland.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I'm a retired teacher with 37 years of teaching in the state of Maryland, Prince George's County Schools, public schools, colleges, and preschool. And in all this time, I've talked to young kids about taking care of our water, how to improve it, how not to mess it up. When I talk to them about messing it up, basically I said, you know, don't pollute. I never talked to them about building a MagLift across the Beaver Dam Creek and the Patuxic River. I didn't think, didn't think I needed to. They were first graders, they were first, five years old, six years old, sometimes eight years old, sometimes 10 to 11-year-old students. And I never talked to them about, you know, what they shouldn't do as far as building things to tear up waterways. I thought that was a little bit above them. You've got a poster out front, the number one poster that I saw when I came in here, and Mr. Rainey alluded to it also. He said that the goal of this is the, to be the fastest train in the world. Well, that's real noble, but at what expense are we doing the fastest train in the world to get from point A, DC, to point B, Baltimore, not in Baltimore, Baltimore, outside of Baltimore, still having to take the trains into Baltimore, crossing over two strategic waterways, tearing up the environment, tearing up the roads to build the infrastructure to get to point B, actually point A, tearing up New York Avenue, going underneath the, we didn't mention anything about the Anacostia, which has its share of problems. We don't need to add more problems to it by building a tunnel underneath it, or a bridge over it, or however we plan on getting over the Anacostia. I know that's not part of the water quality certification request, but that still is another major obstacle. I don't think that a previous speaker talked about, and I'm not sure where she got this information, millions of cars off the road. I take offense into that. Of all the people I've talked to, I can't think of anybody that would use this MagLift.
30 seconds.
I got you. I doubt it would take millions of cars off the road. I can't think of it would take 10 cars off the road. It's not feasible. You still have to get on in DC, you still have to get off somewhere near Baltimore. I don't think it's going to work. Again, increasing the speed, but at what expense to our waterways, and what expense to our children and to the youth of Maryland. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. So at this point, I don't have anyone else who has indicated an interest in providing public comments. What I'm going to do is look around the room, and I'll wait a second here to see if anyone else who's in the room does want to make comments. I'm not seeing anyone getting up, so what I'm going to do is go into recess right now. Like I said, it is 7:44 now. I will come back in about 10 minutes, maybe right around 7:55, and provide an update. If in that interim time, someone does indicate a desire to testify, I'll come right back on the record and allow that person to testify. So again, if someone wants to testify, we'll come right back. If not, I will come back and provide an update at 7:55. So right now, it is 7:44, and we are in recess. So right now, it is 7:44, and we are in recess. Okay, it is now 8:05, and no one else has arrived who has indicated they want to testify. So what we're going to do is we're going to stay in recess, and we're going to be in recess for another 10 minutes until 8:05. At that time, if we have not received anyone who wants to testify, we are going to close out the hearing. So again, we're going to give 10 more minutes to allow anyone who is not here time to get here, but also to allow anyone who is here who has not had the opportunity to testify, if they change their mind and want to, we'll accommodate that. So again, we're going to go into recess right now, and if no one else is here to testify at 8:05, I'm going to wrap up with some remarks and then turn it over to Ms. Spendif